Public Works Commissioners Meeting, May fourteenth. Does anyone wish to speak in a public forum? Nope. All right, we have the minutes from April ninth.
Uh, make a motion that we accept them as written, seconded.
Motion seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Um, the executive meeting minutes from that little meeting we had, if we could just get those for the next meeting?
Yes.
Devote on?
Yep.
Please. Thank you.
I didn't do them because I wasn't really going to.
I think I'm just gonna do those in open session, as long as we don't have to talk about them.
Okay.
Like, if we're just voting them, I just devote.
We are.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, we got some. Water and sewer abatement.
Well, there we go, all right, you got it what you thought.
We got an abatement for T and K ceiling. Uh, two thousand five hundred seventy-five dollars seventy-five cents for water, two thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars forty-two cents for sewer.
So that one, they, for some reason, we couldn't figure out, the two readings that are there don't equal what the usage was printed out on their bill.
They filled them for like forty-eight thousand eight hundred when it should have been fourteen thousand something.
Hey, what's a few extra thousand not part of it, hell?
Okay. Like, the numbers were entered, well, I guess you can't tell if the numbers entered correctly because it's just.
Well, the numbers entered in for the, for the readings were entered correct, but for some reason, the usage came out wrong. So there was something happened, so.
We'll blame the computer. Uh, and then we.
A chance of that happening again, dude, or is this?
It has happened in the past.
It's just a map, it's a map, it's somewhere.
Very, very few, but it has happened.
Right, because it takes the. The readings and converts it.
Convert, yeah, you, once.
It's a hundred cubic feet.
It entered, it automatically does what the usage is, but for some reason, it popped out with, or the wrong usage.
Oh.
Did it pop out or was it written wrong?
It might, it had to be a computer.
Well, I guess nothing's written, it's all downloaded.
It's all downloaded.
Know what I'm saying, oh, it's all downloaded?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's all computerized.
Came up wrong?
Yeah, for some reason, it came out, yeah.
So.
It, it inputted the right, the correct reading, but the math, the automatic math didn't translate.
So is this software glitch or something?
Yeah, basically, software glitch.
It has, has happened, but very, very few, but it has happened.
But we shouldn't have to pay for it, that's the problem here, right?
No, we didn't pay for it.
No. Was there a shift rate?
People.
They, yeah.
The people don't pay for it, but either did we.
No.
Yeah, the rebate. Whatever. Um, and then we got, uh, two thirty-three, Winter Street. Uh, abatement, six thousand four hundred eighty-three dollars fifty cents in water, five thousand four hundred ninety-two dollars forty-eight cents in sewer.
Yep.
Reading wrote down wrong, so I'll just.
Okay.
That is a big one.
Yeah.
If you actually get that water bill, you get a thirteen thousand dollar.
Yeah, yeah.
Water and sewer bill for a single-family house.
Hello.
That's a.
Well, thank you.
All right, so we have two abatements.
So we just like either customer requires.
Right.
Sometimes, we, usually, we get.
Surprised this one didn't pop up on the, don't we get like a report that says, hey, this person used eight hundred percent more water than?
What we do is we go through and then we call them and we send a letter, but if we can't get in touch with them, there's nothing worth.
Okay.
There's not, yeah, there's not more we do.
So did this person get a letter?
Yeah, they got a letter.
Letter saying that they have a very high usage.
Okay.
And could, you know.
And then.
And then, and when we look back.
Makes me want to check my bills.
You should, you should.
I think I do.
Do well.
I'm gonna have to keep checking.
Yeah, because with the TK.
I'm assuming my wife would tell me if.
With the TK one, I went all, we went all the way back to, I went all the way back to, what, two thousand eleven? And made sure that there was no other issues with readings and usage.
Okay, wow, procedurally wise, this worked, this person got a letter that said, hey, your bill's really high and exactly, because that's. Heads up. One of the benefits of the software, like, we wouldn't know this back in the golden age when we're physically writing numbers.
So that.
You know, this now, the software tells us.
Was like, um, that wasn't a radio read one, so when they wrote it down, so we sent the letter, we kept calling, and then when they got the bill, they called us with the letter, so we, you know. We were able to swap out the meter and.
Okay.
Yeah, okay, no, that's good, I mean, that's what we want. All right, so we got the two abatements. Need a motion?
Two more have to sign that.
Make a. Yeah, I need a motion.
Make a motion that we accept the abatement as read, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Sorry to talk about it, just. All right, so we have two other on this very nice form.
Application for abatements.
Application for abatements.
Where do you think you're putting it?
No, no, it's.
Oh, what's this one?
I saw this before the meeting, I was saying, I was about to say, I really like this form, and I guess I did the same thing in October.
I really like this form, he can use it, all right.
So.
When October, and then I tell him again how he liked it.
So.
Right, just keep telling him, next time, go.
So we have, um, fifty-nine Rose Way. Um, taxpayer was away for a ten-day period in mid-February. Someone played a prank and left a water spigot in the backyard on full force, it was wintertime, and no reason to be left open. Sea chart attached, February usage, four thousand nine hundred and seventy, more than half of the total, which doesn't make sense, also see water bill, March bill, usually. Fifty-seven hundred to sixty-three hundred cubic feet, nine-three-six-seven is way too high.
Yeah, the form isn't big enough?
I guess. Yeah. Wow, look at this. I'm saying, nice form, he's like, critique it.
Who's, I mean, you get pranks, who's responsible? I, I mean.
The only thing you can abate him for is the sewer. Right, so.
That's right.
Again, I'm not saying how we should, I'm just saying, in the past.
Yeah.
When people have had instances like this.
Yeah.
Where the water clearly didn't go, if they're telling the truth, again, we gotta believe what they say.
Right.
If the water did not go back down through the sewer, we would abate the sewer, but they would have to pay the water because town paid for the water, so unfortunately, the person didn't pay for the water.
I'm with that.
So, um.
It's a shame.
Unfortunately.
I put caps on mine, but still.
Help out, please.
And.
You know.
With the, uh.
Get a camera? So there's no, we, we don't have, you know, this is just an application, so we don't have the abatement.
Right.
Um, again, this is kind of, instead of having people come here, or, you know, this is just a nice, easy way for them to explain the situation, and then, um. You know, I. Don't think we need to take a vote, I think it's really just if we. Um.
So if we're.
Well, we, we're not approving the abatement yet.
This will be next time.
Yeah, next time we'll have the dollars.
Correct, oh, okay, so we can't prove it right now?
No, because we don't know the dollars.
Exactly.
But it's just a kind of a, a means and methods of, if everyone is on board.
Yeah.
That, you know, we can, Melissa can communicate back with the resident that, unfortunately, we can't do anything about the water. Because the town paid for it.
Right.
But we could abate the sewer and you can do the math and tell them what that can be, unfortunately, sorry.
This, this shut off inside the house, I got one of them. Yeah, they can put shut offs, so you can't open it up.
No.
Outside.
Yeah.
Your turn.
I used it, back when I was a new homeowner, I did, now I just.
Well, now with the new houses, they have the frost freeze, so people.
Yeah, true, that's true.
I love that either.
I still do it, even though.
Doesn't get cold enough, to be honest.
I never thought of that.
So, all right, and then we have, um, eighty-six Westwood Drive. Um, we had no heat in our lower level, we have a split ranch, for about ninety days, we had three different service repair persons come to correct this. About five times, the heating system pipes were drained, beginning of February twenty-twenty-five, a pipe burst underground right by the boiler. The boiler room, laundry room had about an inch of water, finally had it repaired by a plumber in February sixth. So we're not aware that the water was previously continuously going through the pipe in the system, please consider, thank you, we always try, we are always trying to conserve water here, usually.
Usually.
I like that.
The bottom line is, we still have to pay for the water.
Again, I think similar instance, if it flooded their basement, clearly it didn't go again, and then feel sad, so feel bad, sorry. Um, but I think it's the same thing, I, that's my.
Pay the water, when we bait.
Pay the water and we can abate the sewer.
Yeah.
Um.
Do you want us to sign these? Yeah, I don't think they realize we pay for.
We, we don't sign, no. Let's, yeah, let's.
Oh, we do anyways, okay.
And we'll just do approved.
We're approving them to proceed to the abatement?
Yeah, I mean, we're still gonna get them.
Yeah, we still have to get them. Do you write down an approved, uh, for sewer rebate only? Or do we, do we put a note on it?
Just. Um.
Good thinking.
Yeah.
Cool.
Just an asterisk or something.
See my brother, my son.
Yeah.
Pearl happen?
No, I agree.
When I go, yeah. Okay.
Well, you don't even know where you were. I guess, I gotta get it before it happen or last, I don't know what you, they're all the same color.
All right. That's it for abatements. Um, we just need to sign these, right, the deeds?
Yes.
They're just cemetery deeds, they just need to be signed, they don't need to be voted. Um.
Sign these as well. Melissa's gonna turn those into abatements for next time.
Okay, yeah, I, we're just signing that we.
She's got magic launch.
Next time.
Oh, I just, I need a third signal, I think.
Yep, yeah, and I just noted, Ken's a good point, I just said sewer only.
Yep.
So. All right, operational updates.
Uh, for me, I've been getting pricing from T L Edwards for the chapter ninety road work, um, you know, we have a substantial amount of funds to spend on roads this year. Uh, but it doesn't go far, so I got the, I got, um. Estimates for. Davis Ave, Whitman Ave, from Washington Street to Blake Street, Court and Charles, and the last section of Park Ave, from which Curbs, near the school. To South Ave, it's all broken up. That all is four seventy-five, not including details. So four seventy-five for that.
Is that just roadway? Roadway, or are we doing any sidewalks or any?
Just roadway, just milling, structures, paving, some new berms on Whitman Ave, the, the grades on Whitman Ave starting like right after the town hall and going down towards the pool. You know, the sidewalk, the existing sidewalk, the grassy berm are like, you know, foot and a half higher than the street, so, well, I'm gonna have to add some monolithic berm around that side there, and then, you know. Fill it in with some wood, but it's all roded. Um, and then, the other, uh, so then I got pricing for, I'm getting a bunch of prices, but, you know, these are kind of like priority roads in my mind, so. And then, Hogue and Kenwood, and then there was like a short section of Hogue that dead ends, is brutal, and, uh, so that's like one eighty.
Shoot.
So, we're quickly, you know, we're quickly getting to what we have for funds, uh. And the pricing I got for Hogue and Kenwood is, we're gonna, you know, rather mill it, we're gonna overlay it, we're gonna, you know, do like, we'll, we'll start to raise some stretches. And do like a lot of any course and overlay, but we're not gonna mill it. Um. With the traffic they get down there, um, you know, you're, you know, ten plus years out of it, it with just an overlay, uh, because if we, we can't mill it, so we would have to do a full-depth reclamation. And now you're getting into like, big bucks. There's a section of Hogue that is extremely rutted, and it's like, you know, two house lots long, that my crew will go in and will saw cut the road, and we're gonna dig that asphalt right out. Put some, you know, put some, uh. Gravel in there, bubble it and pack it, so they can come in and go on top of it, rather than having to, you know, save some money, it's not, it's not a huge job for my guys with weight all, you know. So, and then, you know, I still got, I still got pricing coming in on, um. Ellis Ave, the last section of Alden, but I don't think we'll, you know, probably won't end up getting there with that, with the funds that we have. Um, the sidewalk funds that town meeting voted, I think we'll end up going towards the grant for the Plymouth Street sidewalks. Because that, if we get that grant of five hundred thousand, the estimate for the job is close, is more than six. So we'll be using some chapter ninety money and the voted sidewalk money to supplement that. If we get that, that could be a project that starts this summer.
Nice. Okay, you have to.
Plymouth Street from way to way?
South Ave to Indian Trail.
Okay. Which side are you going on? I forget.
Uh, TB.
TBD.
Yeah, because there's poles, they, they, they go, they start out on one side, I go, I think it will be on the. East side of Plymouth Street? So if.
So the Indian Trail, Candlewick, side, would that be?
Yeah, that side, yeah.
No, I, I should say the west side, the west side.
West side, okay.
So, that's what I'm thinking, because if the sidewalk wraps around the top of South Ave, when we eventually do a South Ave project, they will marry it to that and go, but. And there's a drainage ditch that runs down the west, the east side, that runs from like, uh, past your lane to Indian, well, not all the way down the Indian Trail, but it's an open ditch.
Just pass, pass.
Yeah, so that could complicate that.
Yeah, it's a complicated, yeah.
Um.
Definitely, yeah.
There's no, like, don't be any need for like land takings, or I don't even think any big trees or anything like that, because the rail of the road is like fifty feet. So.
If, if you're able to do that, can you, can you propose one for Indian Trail to Abington? I mean. You know, you.
Well, the answer is no, because the, the grant is only maximum five hundred thousand.
I know, this grant.
Right.
Oh, yeah. For next year?
No, so you, there's like, I think it's a two or three-year wait in between complete street grants, so we got the complete street grants, we did that in the section up there, sidewalk.
Yeah.
And then it's been a few years, so now we pop up on the Complete Streets grant page that Whitman's eligible for five hundred thousand, so we put in five.
Okay.
It needs to, it's been applied for, it's all done, so it's just, you know.
So we, but we can try to get that.
Oh, yeah, I think the plan should be moving forward is to do that in phases.
Sure.
And we have it all in our Complete Streets fifteen, fifteen, um, project prioritization plan.
Yeah.
So it's in there.
Good.
In segments, they go from Indian Trail to Pleasant Street, and the Pleasant Street to the Rotary, it's so, you know, and just kind of completed eventually.
Okay, that'd be good, nice.
Abington's long. Yeah, just fortunately.
Yeah.
Like, can do it every few years.
Just curious on the Hogue, is it the first? The first portion, and then?
So if you, you, like, a lot of people don't go down there very often, so if you go on the very last Hogue, so Puffett Station, first Hogue, middle road, yeah, the first road is done with the water main project and the gas main project.
That's not the one with ruts in it, that's.
Right, that, that marries into the new subdivision, and then the middle road was done by chapter ninety work, then wrapped around.
Two years ago.
And then, and then comes around through the middle there and stops, so, the very last road of the Hogue, the first like, couple hundred yards.
That's the one.
And then there's an intersection that's been repaid, so skip over that, and then start up going down Kenwood.
To the.
Which dead ends, and there's a branch off of that, has like six houses on it, that's called Hogue.
Oh.
It's all kind of.
No, I know, it, it, like, dog legs.
Yeah.
It's that other side, all right, I was just, I was hoping it wasn't the side that.
No, no, this is like, just broken up asphalt, huge.
Yeah, that whole area was a mess, like, you know, we.
Yeah.
Did some chapter ninety, the, the gas and water took care of a lot of it.
Get some water.
We did that. But, yeah, there was nothing. It was like two inches of mix and nothing else there.
Yeah. On a swamp.
On a swamp. And they built it.
So, uh, that's pretty much it, the other stuff was kind of like building stuff that. Uh, we've been doing, the guys have just been doing their normal, they're out there, you know, the highway crews out there, pot hole and still spring sweeping, and, uh. You know, we making ways to move the break rule if we do, up to the armory and, um. Park and tree guys are mowing like crazy because it's mowing, it's.
So rain, rains coming.
Oh, yeah. I wanna see that.
Yeah, they were out there today.
Yeah.
Yep.
Still gonna have to get approved for the truck, right, is that?
The truck's been approved.
Okay.
Uh.
That's good.
Contacted Danny Adams, salesman at McLaughlin's, like, the next day, he's got two trucks on the lot, you know. One of them's, you know, a crew cab, one-ton dump, four-wheel drive, so we just have to have it outfitted with a plow, don't really want the crew cab. Uh, it's just like bit much, it makes a really long wa, wheelbase.
Yeah.
Like, for us to get into cemeteries, like, in just tight areas, you know, I'd rather just, I really just want a basic regular cab, one-ton dump. Yeah, they have one up there, uh, on the lot, it's, uh. It's white, so, you know, but if we can get a good deal.
Yeah, yeah.
Because they're sitting on a lot.
Sure.
So, working on that, and that money comes good July first.
Good deal. All right. Cool. Dave, what do you got?
Um. So the crew's gonna start their, uh, spring water flushing next Monday. Um, that's what we got going on right now, we took delivery of the new ten-inch water meter for the Temple Street pit, we installed it over the last couple of days, so that's in. We're just waiting for them to come down the program, we gotta have it, the registry programmed, because they sent this to it in gallons, and not cubic feet. So, but the guys got it installed, it came out really good, I have pictures, I just haven't sent anything, you know, if anybody wants to see them. Um, well, and with the. All the articles I got approved, I started with Apex, um, for the, the infiltration for the sewer manholes, because that's gonna, if. That all works out, I'll, we'll be saving about three to eight, three to five million gallons a year, getting that done, so, we've already started, we talked to Kath Keith, because she's procurement. And we kind of got a schedule, we're looking at, uh, like, five twenty-nine, like, to submit to Central Registry. Possibly going out to bid sometime in June, and then hopefully, once the funds become available, we can award, and. So we'll, we're gonna, we're getting this process going, so when the funds become available, we can.
You can award it early July.
Get it done during the summer while it's dry, and then, uh, I reached out for the bioxide system at South Ave, I, later, about a couple hours ago, I just received their new, um. Proposal to do it, because he had to update it, so it's still, I believe it's gonna come in under budget, like about five thousand, I know what I, we originally planned, so that'll work out.
Nice, good.
So.
That's so.
And.
The, so the infiltrate with lining?
Uh, epoxy coating.
Manholes, pipe, or?
Manholes.
Just manholes.
Yep, all manholes. Um, the way they worked out, it's probably even more, but it, it's like, works out to be like, like I said, up to five million gallons a year. It's like, so many gallons per, I forget what the thing, but.
Yep.
So, but it's gonna save us a lot.
Good.
And stuff. Um. And the assessment plan that was approved, we're gonna start working on that, or we have a Zoom meeting with Mary Beth and stuff from Clean Water Trust for the congratulations and stuff, so we'll get going on that, that. That won't actually really start happening until probably the beginning of the next year, because of the, to the process we have to go through.
To get the grant.
Yeah, for the grant, the grant was approved, so out of it, it's like just under three hundred thousand, we're gonna get a hundred and fifty thousand of that, through the grant.
That's good.
Well, that's what we've been working on. Truly voted, same thing, guys, just been kind of cleaning up around the garage, palletizing and stuff, getting stuff ready to move.
Bruce, anything happen up at Secconi to let it go out?
No, uh, Mary Beth's on vacation this week, and when she gets back, I was gonna have, have her, kind of, hold it up.
Okay. Speaking of which, Secconi, why, why do I keep hearing his name all around between the church and various other places, does somebody else? Joe that's over here, right now, he is, nothing happened to him, right? That must be his father, maybe it's some sort of anniversary or.
I think it's still the, the grandson, they just keep, they just keep bringing it up.
Oh, do they, okay.
Yeah, it's been.
All right. I keep seeing it, I, wow. Is the building on schedule, how are we doing with that thing?
Uh, they're on schedule now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Been bumped back.
Yeah.
But, uh. Yeah, they, you know, they, they're in there doing like, uh, the cabinets and finish work on the window sills and.
Nice.
The locksmith was here today, that, um, you know, it's like, most of, most of the exterior doors and one interior door are key cards, but they, they also be like a master key that opens up like. Actual master key that can open up everything, and then, some of the interior doors will have locks, like some of the stock rooms, like the tool room and the, and the pots room, you know. You know, um, like, in our offices will have locks, do you want a lock in the, um. The conference room door?
I don't think, I don't think so. Yeah, I don't think so.
No, I didn't think so either, I, I didn't ask for one.
No.
It wasn't.
Yeah, unless you pay office space, I mean, the, the room you, you have your files in, probably should be, right, don't we have like a file room or a?
Yeah, but there's no doors to it.
Oh, there's no doors to it.
There's no door in that one, but personnel files could go in like, like, our offices, like, like. Like, for instance, the, the personnel files that have like the drug testing information and stuff, that should be secure, it's supposed to be secure, so that could be in our offices.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I mean, that could be in a file cabinet in the file room, as long as the file cabinet is locked, you know what I mean, it doesn't have to be in its own.
Right.
As long as wherever it is, is secure.
Yeah.
There you go.
So, you know, building stuff, we took delivery, like I was saying earlier, we took delivery of, uh, you know, tire machines, stuff that weren't like, uh, general contractor supplied, I'm not sure how you work, you know, but. It wasn't part of his contract to supply those things, the big lift, it was part of his, but those stuff, we've been getting, so we've taken.
But there was a budget for it, there, there was a line item in the contract for these guys to buy what they needed.
Yeah.
You know.
Yeah.
Right.
Equipment wise, you know, we were just talking about, like, you know, forklift, and, you know, you're, you got like a hoist, right, didn't you get a?
Well, yeah, we got the chain fall, and I got a, like, a shop toolbox and a roll bench and, you know, stuff like that, so I don't have to take, go to the mechanic shop to borrow tools or take tools off the truck.
There you go.
So it's, you know, my, I, the one, the switcher was very minimal, because, you know, but it's good to have it in, in the shop.
Yeah, stuff like, um. The, you know, like a lodged steel, heavy-duty steel table, you could put a very heavy-duty vice on, and get pricing for that, from the same company that's supplying all this other stuff, so, they're, that's what they do, garage equipment, so. Big vice, a big huge metal table, uh, table-mounted grinder with a wide brush on, you know, one of those things, all the stuff that we had before, that was, you know. Fifty-plus years old.
Fifty, right.
Yeah, I mean, and we're talking about like the grinders, you wouldn't, like, like, you'd go to someplace and buy, pay three hundred dollars for a grinder, you know, mount it on your shop in your basement or whatever, but.
Yeah.
You know, these are like fifteen hundred, like.
Commercial.
You know, Dennis, I'm sorry, that one we had over there was there longer than Dennis or I, you know, and it was. So what, I mean, it was rugged, you know?
Yeah, you gotta, yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a, an industrial space, it's not in the garage or even in your, you know.
Right.
It, now's the time, I mean, there, there was, all those type of things are in the budget and part of the plan and part of it, so, you know, we get, always said, said a numerous times, you guys, get what you need. You know, get what we need in the office, get what we need, you know, if it's new file cabinets, if it's new plant table, you know, whatever, it's, get what we need.
I was concerned about the, the table, like, the, what I call the drafted table out here, having a table that big over there, or the, they have a table in that room now, where it's like, kind of up against the wall where they have it mounted.
Yeah.
Well, I, I think it's good, I think it's, it's like almost as big as that one.
Oh, is it, good?
Because we were looking, uh, we were looking at refurbish, and this one having like a company that does like linoleum tops on tables, or something like that, and not necessarily, and having refurbished that one. But it's like, we couldn't, because that's a nice table.
Yeah, yeah.
So that might go, we might move that upstairs in the mess or something like that, you know, I don't know, you know, it's a nice heavy-duty.
Yeah.
Were they gonna do with the furniture here, sell it or just scrap it all, going in the dumpster?
In here? In here?
Yeah.
We, you know, we take everything that you guys need and want.
Yeah.
You know, um. And then I think the whole building is. It it's the town's property.
Yeah.
And, you know, whether they do, hey, they declared surplus and. Have a yard sale, auction it. Well, once you declare it a surplus.
Surplus, yeah.
You just gotta follow, it's no different than purchasing things, you gotta follow the procedure.
Town Department.
Yeah. They may need this, yeah.
True, yeah.
We were talking about that the other day, this all, all this stuff that you guys sit in and that table came from a bank in Lexington.
Really?
They, I don't know if it was a tax write-off or how that we found out about it, but it was all sudden. One day, like, I think Frank was there at the time and John Pennelli was like, let's go, we took all the trucks.
Oh, yeah.
Plus like the Lexington and.
I remember going, yeah.
There it is.
Brought it downstairs.
Picked up all kinds of stuff.
Yeah. So it's still gonna be a hundred and fifty, so we're gonna tie in the opening with all of that.
Oh, jeez, no, I get. Yeah.
While the, the ceremonies.
Yeah, they're not even scheduled to be done with the new building till the end of July.
End of July.
And then they still need to knock that one down and then finish all the site work.
Oh, so they won't have a grand opening for that, they'll probably.
After Labor Day, I I think we probably, you know, if we wanna do some, and we should, do some type of ribbon cutting, we probably shoot for like. Just after Labor Day, exactly like you said, like. You know, oh, yeah, we definitely have something, yeah.
But I mean, talk to the one fifty, take some pitches, you know.
Yeah.
Get it into the history books.
Yeah, I, cause I think all that over by what, June?
June twenty second, is it?
Their completion date isn't even till the end of July.
Right.
Yeah, and and. The site may not be a hundred percent, maybe the building's ready.
Yeah.
And we've even moved in, but they might still be out here doing stuff for, you know, final landscaping out, you know, cause there's still work to do.
I know.
You know, so I think it's probably target just after Labor Day, just. So people can.
Right.
Come, it's on a vacation. You know, let these guys get moved in, so it looks like we're using it and like we did with before, we pick a Saturday. You know, and we roll out the red carpet and then do a little ribbon cutting and.
So we go by, we we go by fiscal year, so June thirtieth, it's ended, is that what you're saying?
Their completion has nothing to do with fiscal year, it's just.
So the celebration of the hundred and fiftieth, when does that end? Isn't that the end, and then, isn't that the end of the year?
I have no idea what the, I think the last festivity is like mid-June, right?
End in June.
Yeah. I wanna say what the parade and fireworks left.
Twenty second, yeah, the town parade is the twenty second.
Here you go.
Which are one o'clock, they said.
We have parade for that and we get Memorial Day parade coming up.
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, is it our year?
Yeah.
Memorial Day is always in uh, they always have it in the town.
Right.
It's Veterans Day, they.
All veterans that they rotate, okay.
But but legally, it'll still be in the year, all I'm trying to say is that, if we can get it within the year, it's a hundred and fiftieth.
Yeah, I mean, it it's kind of, yeah, these guys should be in there.
By the end.
In August.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, any, any. Formal ribbon cutting, I I think we shoot for September. Oh, yeah, yeah. And then we can, you know, do whatever else, you know, we've talked about dedicating, whether it's break rooms and.
Yeah.
Conference rooms and and things like that, I think. Um, you know, did you look at, look into the plaque? I still wanna do that.
Um, you know, we never finished talking, I think I sent it to you enough.
What, oh.
Dedicate.
Well, that, that's one thing, but I think. You know, most public buildings, they have a big plaque and it's got the town manager, it's got the contractor, it's got the engineer. It's got the list of selectmen, the list of commissioners, you know.
I think it's a no brainer, there'd be a plaque like that, maybe you like. On the, into, on the way into the conference room or.
Or even, I mean, something like that, like you might even put it just outside, I I don't know.
Yeah.
Just inside the foyer.
Yeah, inside the foyer.
And and then we can talk about, okay, you know, you know, who we wanna dedicate the conference room to, the meeting room, whatever calling it. You know, then we get the break room.
Yeah.
You know, um, you know, those are probably the two, I'm not gonna go crazy, like dedicating every room. Oh, yeah, I I I think, you you see it in every public, you walk into the middle school, you, you know what I mean?
I was just gonna say, yeah, yeah, with the uh commissioners, the superintendents.
Anybody who's selectman at the time is on there, anything on the building.
It'd be the selectmen, it'd be the building committee, it'd be the commissioners, contractor gets his name on there, the engineer gets his name on there.
I recently sampled, you know, copy these guys too, just, and it doesn't have to be that, that was just an idea that.
I'm assigning it to you. Oh, seriously, I mean, I. I've never had to do one, I don't know if you have contact, like we need someone to make it. So that's.
Crime company could.
Yeah. I I.
Do you want me to put my feelers out?
Cause I've. I have a contact that did a plaque for us for something else and that, in the park and.
Yeah, it it's stuff, you know, it's really just, yeah, it's gonna be decent size, just because, like I said, it's gonna have. It's gonna have the select board, it's gonna have the building committee, it's gonna have the commissioners, it's gonna have the architect engineer. It's gonna have the contractor, superintendents, you know what I mean, so.
There's, there's a plaque on the bandstand for when they renovated the bandstand, has everybody who was on the bandstand renovation committee.
There you go, so.
Should be when you enter in, right in that foyer.
Probably in the foyer, yeah.
Then people can see it, not they'll read it, you know, they.
Who pays for that, by the way, that's a question.
The project would. Out of the project, yeah, oh, the, the project would pay for that, yeah. I mean, you have.
It's a sign.
You know, maybe it's a couple thousand dollars, I don't know, and and that's only if we, yeah, we want something nice, I'm not saying we're gonna make it out of cold, but, you know.
We, there was a plaque on the, on the fountain in the park, that's kind of across from the old police station. And it was um, it was as as fit to the fountain and then it got vandalized, it came off, was really old, so I had a guy make a copy of it. You know, I don't like thick metal like that thick, and like brass black with blast, brass writing, you know, it's nice.
Alright, yeah, I think that's what you, something like that, and obviously you put the, the Public Works crest on there and.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sample just as an idea, but.
Hundred years now.
Look like that. Yes.
When we're not around anymore.
That's cooked, we don't eat.
Speaking of which, Bruce, did you guys put anything in the capsule at the town hall?
So we have these brass medallions that, there was a box in the basement. Down there forever, they say Whitman Department of Public Works on. It's something like you would embed in the sidewalk, which we've done on some new sidewalks around town, and they're brass, so the the shop looking, the heavy.
Nice.
So we did one of those and we did a, the rendering of the new building, the color rendering of the full size.
Okay, yeah.
Of the.
New building.
Front elevation view for Mastic Street of the new building.
Cool, nice.
Good.
Alright.
That's so fun. We do that as well. We have plaques.
Yeah.
Put it around. We actually have a superintendent that's collected them over the years, just by working in the city, he's got a huge box, some of ours, some of other contractors, pretty cool.
You know, when embedded in the sidewalk.
There you go. So, when they redid that little bump out. Yeah, he sent the text.
I I feel his pain, I, he got the shingle shot. I'll never do that again. The doctor convinced you, I got it a few months ago and the same thing.
Yeah, I heard.
Really? Hell out of me.
Jeez, I I.
Yep.
I got.
Both of them, the first one, I was out for like a day and a half, the second one was like.
Which shot was this?
The shingle shot.
Shingles, don't get it.
I, I've never done a flu shot.
Fifty-five, whatever it is.
A few months ago, I went and the doctor's, oh, you should get a shingle, I'm like, oh, it, cause obviously I've heard. Shingles of.
It's, yeah. If you had measles, the germs in your.
So you got it, but what happened?
I was.
That's supposed to be the shingles.
For like a day and a half, yeah, like just in bed.
Great.
Like a hundred degrees, one minute and freezing cold the next minute, like just.
So we're not gonna run to get that, huh?
And then the second shot wasn't as bad, but it was still like maybe a half a day, you know, that was just kind of like, I didn't really feel a hundred percent.
How long did you have to wait between the shots, I can't even remember when I had.
Something like that.
I I couldn't remember either one.
Yeah, it's like four or five weeks. And I did the, you know, drink all the fluids beforehand and do that and that, you know, keep, you know, moving your arm after this.
Oh, yeah.
I left, I got it in the morning, I left work that day at like one o'clock, cause I'm like.
Like a Friday.
Friday, yeah. Turns out you want a long weekend. Any uh, any new business, any old business? Talked about old business with the building. Big election Saturday.
I, oh, yeah, I'm gonna actually bring that up.
Oh, yeah.
All right, get adjourned.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
If things go bad at that election, are we gonna get together, are you the board gonna notify the employees earlier than the next? Commissioner's meeting?
Um, if, if, if a, I would, I would guess. That obviously Mary Beth would start with meetings with all the department heads.
Yeah.
Why, I think if it vote no, there's another town meeting needed.
Yeah, it's not gonna be, if it. It's not gonna be, okay, that's, there's more, it's gonna happen.
Yeah.
Because.
But they would have to, Article Two would have to be re. Redone and voted again.
Stuff for the articles.
Right, well, Article Two of the budget.
Right.
Would have to be brought back to town meeting.
So that could go over July first and all that stuff, I'm just, I'm just curious, you know what I mean?
I don't know.
People hang, hang it.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I know, yeah.
If it doesn't pass, those rumors are gonna be running rampant. You know what I mean, and and.
Well, the minute they announce the election results, I'm sure you're gonna, you're gonna start knowing, you got a rough idea how many people after me.
We don't.
Oh, I thought they did.
So we just said.
No, we don't.
We won't know until. Because they just been throwing out around others, plus, if the override doesn't pass, that's not the end of it, cause if Hanson doesn't pass, then we have to, we might end up having a super town meeting. There's a lot of things that.
Okay.
And and then if it all said and done, then it's gonna be how does the selectmen and Mary Beth and the department heads figure out. How much from each department they're gonna need, because that's just been ballpark figures. Oh, it could be, you know, one to three from here and one from here and one from there, that's just been ballpark figures.
Yeah.
With no set.
Oh, okay, oh, I realize that.
And then, she's gonna leave it up to the department heads to, if they can. To just take their budget as a whole and decide, okay, well, I'm gonna cut from this, this and this and this, and then I'm not gonna have to use, lose one guy.
Okay.
Right, so the Article Two, the budget, they're gonna come and say, hey, the Public Works now only has a budget of X.
Right.
Or all your line items are now reduced.
Right, oh, yeah, they all.
And then, then, I think as the commissioners and in the apartment. Yeah, we'll have to get together and say, okay, how do we wanna manage that, you know what I mean, that that those, you know, there. They will allow the individual departments to manage that new budget. And whether that means layoffs, whether that means, hey, we're not gonna do this anymore, whatever it is.
Right.
Um.